Okay, I'm calling to order the Woburn School Committee meeting for August 6th, 2020. Could we please all stand and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Could the superintendent secretary to the school committee please call the roll?
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Here.
Present.
Mr. Kissel.
Here.
Mr. Lipsett.
Here.
Mr. Morenne.
Yep.
Dr. Wells.
Yeah.
Ms. Crowley.
I am present. So, we're all here and accounted for. How this is going to go is I would like to make a brief opening statement and then the superintendent. And it's since last week, as things are ever fluid. And then we will vote to open the public hearing. I will give the ground rules, the general school committee policy on public hearings and public comment. And then we will go till about 9:30. If we're not done, then we will simply overflow the public comments in the next meeting so that our administrators can have a good night's sleep as they work 16 hours a day these days. And so let me begin by making a brief statement. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. We know that caregivers and parents are in the thick of tackling extremely difficult decisions that impact their children's lives. Everything from their practical daily routines to the very basic concept of children's good health. We know that these decisions for the fall of 2020 are extremely emotional, draining, stressful, and scary. And we know that they're probably keeping you up at night. And on behalf of the school committee, you have our continued empathy in that regard. To our staff and teachers, we recognize how strange and uncomfortable this must be to watch while people at public meeting are debating how your job is going to be delivered in the fall. And we thank you for your patience and your collaboration in this effort. But Woburn, as you know, we've been through difficult situations before, and Woburn is resilient. When COVID-19 hit Woburn and we chose, we had to close our schools, our Woburn Public Schools community responded with grace and courage. A sophisticated system of food distribution and technology access was immediately innovated on the spot. All hands are on deck. Systems were put in place to protect our children from continued catastrophe during this horrible crisis. Teachers learned on the fly a new dramatic way of teaching, instructing our children, protecting them. We did our best that we could at the time when it appeared that everything was stacked against us. We rose to the challenge and we will do it again. So let's pause here and remember that Woburn and the Woburn Public Schools is a community of strength and connectedness. Let's try to hold each other and lift each other up. Let's treat each other with kindness and compassion and understanding. Never in a time of history has it been more true than we are all in this together. So on behalf of the school committee, we are pleased and we are excited and eager to hear from you tonight and see what you have to say. That being said, I will pass it to Dr. Crowley for any updates that he has on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. I'm hoping that my screen is effectively shared.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So thank you for your opening remarks. And I know that this meeting is about public comment, but wanted to provide a little bit of context and new information as it becomes available. I want to echo what you said about the community rallying together. And I know that also we have some elected officials on the city council on the call tonight, as well as, I don't believe he's on the call, but Mayor Galvin's been supportive of the schools throughout. So I wanted just to acknowledge the elected officials throughout the city, including the school committee, for your support as we try to do what's best for kids. Yesterday, we released the survey and we have over 2,000 responses as of just prior to me jumping onto the Zoom call. I just want to walk through if people have not yet taken the survey, how they can. So it is available on our woburnpublicschools.com website. When you go to our website, this is the front page of our website. The District Coronavirus Information Page is where all of my correspondence since March 12th has been housed. And so any letter or link or survey is housed in this District Coronavirus Information Page. If you click that, this is where it will bring you. It's the August 5th communication. And if you click this, it will bring you to my letter into the survey link. And so I would encourage any and all to please take, not an incredible amount of time, but some time to fill out the surveys so we can get some feedback from you as it relates to the reopening of school. Also, on the, this page, you can see school return frequently asked questions. So one of the things from the July 31st correspondence from me, what we created, what we're calling a quote hotline. So if people have questions, comments, concerns, they can drop them into the hotline. And we're using that to inform our frequently asked questions, which will be updated. We published this yesterday and we anticipating updating it as much as we have to, to meet the needs and questions of the community. Last spring, at the end of the spring, we asked for feedback from parents about our remote learning. And the three themes that emerged were connections and support, consistency, and organization. And so I want to speak to those a little bit as we think about what the fall might look like. Beginning with the connections and support, one of the questions that was submitted through the hotline repeatedly was device access. And what I can tell you is that we will provide all students a device for online learning. In the spring, we were limiting to one per family because we just didn't have the inventory. Our plan is to have Chromebooks for students grade 2 to 12 and iPads or some device similar for our younger students who don't yet have familiarity with the keyboard. Again, from the feedback this spring, our intent, regardless of the format that we wind up beginning school, is our frequent small group meetings. One of the things that we've all learned through this closure is that, for example, Zoom allows breakout rooms so you can have conversations, smaller conversations, and then come back together. With Google Meet, that capacity also exists. So the intent is to allow for that type of learning to happen because we know that, you know, we want kids to collaborate with each other. And as we develop our plan, it's certainly something that we are conscious of. The other, lastly, in this slide, the opportunity for offline learning specialist class will exist. Being on a computer for six hours a day, having done it since March, is not ideal. And so we know that, and we're going to do our best to create opportunities for students and staff to learn, to be engaged, but not necessarily in front of a computer all day. As far as consistency goes, our capacity is with Google Classroom, particularly at the older grades. And CSO is an online platform for our younger students. Google Meet is the equivalent of Zoom. And so it's housed in our operating system and will be the platform that we use. We will come up with and already have clear expectations for what online learning and the expectations would look like. As far as the organization feedback from the spring, we will be providing assignments to students both daily and weekly so that people have time to plan. And you're going to see momentarily, but a predictable in-person and online schedule of classes so parents and students know what the expectations are every day. One of the items that is new from DESI that I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that the first day of instruction for all Massachusetts schools should be September 16th, 2020. That, again, is allowing for the 10 days of time for teachers to work collaboratively with each other in this new way of opening school. Thus pushing back the start day for students to September 16th. These are all proposed plans, so please understand that everything that I'm going to sort of go through in the next few slides are very fluid. And so it's just to give people an insight into the thinking. This is the hybrid plan that we talked about last week. I pushed out to the community. So the way we're thinking about it is that essentially two cohorts, A and B, would be in school on Monday and Tuesday. And then Wednesday is a virtual learning day. Thursday and Friday would be the other cohort. You can see Cohort C because DESI and I think everyone would agree that our most vulnerable students need to be in school as much as possible. And so we created Cohort C. So they would be in school four of the five days that we would be in a hybrid plan. Everyone would learn virtually on Wednesdays, which will allow for the buildings to be cleaned in between the two cohorts. At the elementary and middle school levels, again, these are proposals. The in-person days will be as close to the regular arrival and dismissal times as possible. At the high school, the, one of the ideas is an early dismissal with the grab and go lunch, which would allow for high school students who are able to handle remote learning, the opportunity to do so in the afternoon, as well as to be home to receive any family members coming from either the middle or elementary school. Sample elementary schedule, again, these are just very, it's hard to, I'm going to do my best to explain. So if you look at, on Monday and Tuesday, it'd be Cohort A. You begin the day with some type of morning meeting and hand washing. All students are wearing masks, so we need to be obviously conscious of the mask wearing, the physical distancing, and the, all the protocols associated with in-school learning as it exists. And we would use block scheduling to allow for greater time for tasks to be, and time students to engage with each other, whether that's in-person or remote. You can see that breaks are built into the morning and afternoon because one of the things that we all know is that wearing a mask for an extended amount of time is not, it's not feasible. And so mask breaks have to be part of whatever the in-person schedule looks like. The lunch at the elementary school is something that we're thinking about as it relates to physical distancing, whether that's in the classroom, cafeteria, or outside. We are in conversations about what that will look like. Again, middle school, proposed ideas. We don't have the days of, as far as the traditional schedule, but Day 1 and Day 2, each day would meet a certain number of periods for a length of time to be determined. And so what would happen is that students would have the opportunity to see every, every class at the middle school, in the high school. And as I said earlier, Wednesday would be remote for all, so both cohorts would join in the remote model on Wednesdays. Sample high school schedule, this was a little bit more specific to, and so for example, you can see the day would begin at 7:30. Period A would last for 45 minutes. Period B, 8:20 to 9:30 would be proposed, a 70-minute block. And so some of the rationale there is to limit the number of times students are actually in the hallways transitioning in between classrooms. This is all proposed. The teacher lunch and the grab and go for students, as I alluded to earlier, would allow students to learn in the afternoon remote and be available to receive any of family members who may be coming home from school that day. In a full remote model, that, which means not hybrid, just in a full remote model, I just want to speak to this. Our intent is that students will work virtually for the duration of a typical school day. So whether that's from, at the, at the high school from 7:30 to 1:51, the intent is to have students engaged during this, what would be the traditional school hours. We recognize that students will be, will need to be provided some materials to support remote learning. When we closed in the spring, one of the biggest things that came up were teachers have so many materials in their classrooms that they needed to support the learning. And so we know that, we're creating back-to-school lists. And so, for example, science kits or things, art materials. So we are aware that we would need to provide and will provide materials to support remote learning. The intent is that every day, live instruction would be scheduled, as I alluded to earlier. We, also, our plan is to have individual and small group instruction broken down so that the teacher could ostensibly group kids to work on a project in group of four and then move from one group to another to do check-in. EL and Special Education Services would also be scheduled to be virtually done. Our intent, and this, this is not, this is non-negotiable, we will be taking attendance every day. The, and the grading systems will be followed. So the difference here candidly is that we, we know what we're, we'd be planning for as, as opposed to the spring when we were essentially building the plane while flying. And so that's in a full remote. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight the thinking that's been going on over the past few days since we pushed out the remote concept. I recognize, and I think you said it, there's no perfect solution here. The best thing would be to come back to school as we know it. We miss the kids, we miss the adult interaction. And so there's, again, no winning in any of this. And so I appreciate everyone's time tonight, and I will stop sharing my screen and begin. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, Dr. Crowley, for that presentation. Unless the, the school committee has burning questions that they need to immediately address, we'll have chance on August 11th to really get to the guts of the presentation. I'd want to give more time for the public comment. So, okay, even Dr. Wells doesn't have any questions. All right, good. So we will now move to the public hearing portion of this. This is an opportunity for the school committee to hear from you, our constituents, our parents, our caregivers, the teachers, and our community staff, and anyone that wants to speak and comes and address the school committee. We have adopted certain ground rules pertaining to school committee public comments. We have a policy in place and it is follows. Every speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak, which is actually a pretty long time. You should be a resident of Woburn or a teacher in the Woburn Public Schools. We used to ask you to give your address. I can understand why you wouldn't want to give your exact address. And I don't think that public school, Woburn Public School employees should have to give their address. So just verify that you are a resident of Woburn or a Woburn Public School employee. If you want, you can, when you chat me, you can leave your contact information. And if you, if you want follow-up, I will be happy to follow-up with you if you address a concern, we can, I can address that with you. This is the big thing. The Woburn School Committee cannot respond to public comments because it would violate open meeting law. So we can't engage in a back and forth with the public. It is a one-way communication. However, if there is a need to respond, the school committee could take a vote and suspend the rules and have a response. So that would have to be a majority vote for, four people would have to vote in order to allow a school committee member or myself to respond to a public comment. If there's something inaccurate, I don't know, like a misstatement of fact that we really want to correct, then we might intervene and correct that. But for the most part, it is a freedom of speech and you have a right to say anything you want on school reopening. So that being said, I will move to public comments. Everything here is being recorded by the Woburn Public Media Station. This will be published. If you show your face, your face will be shown. If you, whatever you say will be recorded and become part of the public record for all eternity. And the alternative, if you don't want to speak tonight, I am holding school committee office hours on Monday evening where you could address your concerns directly to me. I will record them, not record them, I will take them down and I will support them for the school committee. Yes, Ms. Morenne, did I miss something?
I just, I just want, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairperson, if I could at this time, make a motion that we open the public hearing for your instructions to the public at this time.
All right.
Make that motion, please.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll public.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
I had someplace I could spend two weeks by myself.
Yes.
Every two weeks.
Yes. Yes.
Excuse me, if you are on here and you're not speaking, if you could just mute, please. Thank you so much. And now it's, yeah, okay. We were, we were.
All right, Mr. Morenne.
Yes, in favor.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. That passes unanimously, seven votes to zero. And I really need everybody to, I can hear you. Thank you. The first, the first person that asked to speak is Ms. Evelyn Riley. Ms. Riley?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, hi. How are you? Okay, I live in Woburn. I'm a parent of, he's going to be an eighth grader at the Joyce. So I just wanted to say, I wrote something down. First and foremost, I'd like to express appreciation to the Woburn School System, especially the Joyce and the Goodyear, who have educated my son over the past eight years. They've been outstanding. I know I'm probably in disagreement with some teachers on this topic, however, my appreciation for what they've done for my son does not change. I am writing as an extremely concerned parent. I've read the Massachusetts Teachers Association is pushing for 100% at-home learning to start the school year. As a parent, and I can only speak for my son, this is the worst possible method for my son in learning. He went backwards as a student in the spring. I thought my son's teachers did a great job with what they had, but virtual learning is simply not the same as in-person learning, especially as far as my son's ability to focus. My son had an extremely difficult time concentrating during the remote learning. I'm disappointed at the request of the Mass Teachers Association. The Centers for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both stressed the importance of in-person learning for the children. I understand precautions will need to be made, but that is a process to ensure the safety of the children and the teachers as best as can be done so that the children can receive the best education possible. I am more than willing to volunteer my time in the schools if the teachers or administration need extra hands. I understand there is being so much that's being put on them with extra precautions. I'm more than willing to volunteer. I'm happy to do it. Where does this end? There is no cure. The kids are the future of our society and we need to protect the future. By protection, I mean educating our kids so that they can have a better future. Finally, the thought of my son just sitting by himself in a room, unable to concentrate and having his education regressed, concerns me greatly. He is my job and I felt I needed to speak up for him tonight. The vote, as far as I could read, seemed that a lot of teachers and parents in town were willing to at least try the hybrid learning model plan. I'm asking to please, let's try that. Let's try and get the kids back to some sense of normalcy and some sense of companionship with their classmates. This is their childhood, they only get one. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Riley, for your public comment and your input. Next is Derek Genova.
Hello, I am Derek Genova, resident of Woburn. I have a rising second grader and kindergartner in town, and I teach science at Wellesley High School. We need to stop pretending that opening schools, fully or partially, is even remotely safe or feasible. The virus hasn't gone anywhere. It's slightly better in Massachusetts than it was in March and April, but we're still getting over 400 cases a day, an uptick from July, which was about 250 cases. How long do you think that's going to last? Look at all the states that have opened faster than us. They're disasters now. Opening schools is going to be far worse than opening indoor restaurants, bars, and gyms. It's one thing to be in contact with someone for a short period of time, and it's quite another to be in groups for several hours and to eat lunch in common spaces. How do you expect kids to properly distance themselves and wear masks when a large percentage of adults can't even manage it? One of the main reasons Massachusetts has been able to keep its numbers relatively in check is that it's summer and we can do most things outside. Studies have shown that indoors, it can be up to 19 times more likely to spread. So as the weather gets colder and the natural flu season adds its contributions, things are going to get even worse. The idea that kids can't spread it is absolutely false. Summer camps have resulted in hundreds of infections, and schools have already reopened in other parts of the country and elsewhere in the world have also shown spikes in infections. Unless a vaccine becomes available very quickly, there is no way we would make it through the school year without major outbreaks. Look at Major League Baseball, which plays its games outdoors and with minimal physical contact, and has every financial incentive and resource imaginable to succeed, even they can't do it. If we seriously want to open schools, we as a country need to put in the work. We need to knock down the virus to manageable levels, as many other countries have done. We need to increase our testing exponentially and minimize wait times and results. A study from Yale Harvard and MGH showed that students could return to college if they're all tested every two days. That's never going to happen at the K-12 level. That gives you an idea of what is needed to contain outbreaks when students are congregating in schools. Without testing, we're just floundering forward in the dark and hoping we don't fall off a cliff. I'm very tired of the narrative that teachers are refusing the work. I'm not refusing the work. I would love to return and teach a normal school year. I'm not even very concerned about my own personal health, which may be quite foolish, but I'm very worried about the health of all the families of students, and I do not want to be responsible for spreading this virus any further. It is ridiculous to compare us to nurses. Their job is to treat and protect their patients. It is my job to keep my students and their loved ones safe. And the best way to do that is to teach them safely and remotely. This summer, my family has been very cautious. We've had limited social interactions and those we had were outdoors of social distancing. I begged my mother not to attend an indoor bridal shower at a restaurant and eventually succeeded. It's likely you've had a similar experience. When I think about the effort and sacrifice many of us have made to keep the virus at bay in the state, I'm astounded that so many people seem fine with packing students into a building and assuming everything will be fine. Look around, we're losing over 1,000 people per day to this virus. And many do not, many that do recover will have long-term impacts on their lungs and health. Things are not fine and we need to stop pretending they are. Teaching remotely isn't ideal. Learning remotely isn't ideal. No one wants this. I get there's a strong desire to get students back to school so people can get back to work, but I fail to see how jumping through 1,000 hoops to do a hybrid learning model that puts kids in school for two days per week solves that issue. We want schools to reopen, we need actual leadership from the state and country to be honest and frank about what is happening. We need to stop pretending we can do whatever we want without consequences. We can't just open schools and expect things to magically work out. We have to do our homework first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genova, for your public comments. Next, we have Mary Ellen Carrito-Cobs.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Mary Ellen Carrito-Cobs. I live on Pleasant Street in Woburn, and I have a child in the first grade at the Goodyear School. The plan that Dr. Crowley and the team have put together, I've taken a lot of interest in. I'm a 23-year public school teacher and a nine-year principal, so I'm feeling everything. I get it, and I thank you. Mr. Genova, the narrative of bashing teachers is to stop immediately. I am horrified by the Woburn's parents page. I am horrified by the teachers page, and it needs to stop. I do want to speak, though, from the perspective of Mrs. Cobs, Harrison's mother, who attends the GAIN program at the Goodyear, which is a substantially separate special needs program with children with social, emotional disabilities. That's a broad stroke of it. Harrison spent his first two months at the Shamrock at the preschool, the integrated preschool, and then moved on to the Goodyear. He has made exceptional progress. I'm here to speak for him, but I'm also here to speak I'm here to speak for him, but I'm also here to speak on behalf of those parents who are not speaking. Those parents of first language learners, those parents of special needs students who don't have the privilege that my family does, the 23 years of research in child development, to say that these children are at higher risk and they do need that social contact in the educational setting. I have read all the studies. I don't have all the answers and I too, I am awake as both a mother and a school principal. I want people to please consider the equity and the need that some of our children are more high-risk than others. And this is me speaking from a privileged perspective. I thank you for your surveys, school committee and Dr. Crowley. I encourage and urge you to desegregate the responses by language. Who's responding? What grade level are they responding? What is their primary language? And make sure that you're getting a full perspective of what's happening. It is no fun homeschooling a six-year-old and running a building with 500 people. I'm not disagreeing with my neighbors who have a great deal of respect, but I want to give a cautionary guidance or just my true sense or just I am compelled to say. Those children that Dr. Crowley referenced in Cohort C, particularly the high-need students, my son, his classmates, our newcomers, children who are new to this country, they need a special look. So I thank you. I thank Ms. Leonard for communicating with me from the Office of Special Education and I thank the Goodyear School. I'm not an easy customer and I know that. So you're working hard. And please, to those on the call and my colleagues in the classroom, please make sure your voice is raised for those children identified in Cohort C. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrito-Cobs, for your public input and your comments. Next, we have Laura Gill.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Laura Kaczynski-Gill. I live in Woburn. I have three kids who go to the Hurd Wyman. Due to COVID, I'm one of the lucky ones that are able to work from home full-time and my husband is a central worker. There is a major issue here that is one of the reasons why the best option we have is the hybrid model. It's because of our large classroom sizes. My first son started kindergarten at the Wyman in 2017 with 14 kids in his class. Last fall, when my twins started the kindergarten at the Hurd Wyman, it grew into 22 kids. That's a 57% increase in classroom size. We all know that students in smaller classes perform better in subjects and assessments when compared to their peers in larger classes. In smaller classes, students tend to be able to be one to two months ahead in content knowledge, which we certainly could have benefited from now. However, because of our large classroom sizes, we are unable to socially distance safely, hence the staggered schedule and hybrid model. It sounds like we'll be dealing with COVID for a long time. What are your plans to reduce classroom sizes in every school in Woburn to help support our children's education and health? We've been able to stay healthy as a family by isolating our children over the past four and a half months. This has enabled us to continue to work and provide for our family, but once they return to school, the chances of them getting COVID and bringing it back home is out of my control. It will also start to impact the broader community since we could spread the virus and not even know it. We don't even fully know the long-term effects of this virus. We all know what happens when kids go to school. They get sick, cold, strep, the flu. What is your plan if someone in the class is isolating due to potential COVID? Will you tell the class to transition to remote? Do their siblings need to isolate and get tested? If today you feel sick and you want to go get tested through CVS, it takes three days to get swabbed and then another six to 10 days for results. We, as a community, are not ready to physically re-enter the classroom. You are literally using our children and staff as guinea pigs while following this blind mantra of kids just need to get back to school. No, our job is to keep the kids safe and I'm afraid if I don't send them back, they will fall behind their peers and the side effect of this choice is the health and lives of our community. It is August 6th. What are the plans and procedures? The cost to upgrade HVAC systems, PPE, industrial cleaning supplies to handle COVID must be outrageous. Take this opportunity to invest in a robust remote learning plan that we can use beyond this COVID use case. Invest in reduced class size and invest in keeping kids and staff healthy, alive, and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill, for your comments and your public comments and your feedback. Ms. Jennifer Jones.
Great, thank you. And my name is Jennifer Jones and I am a resident of Woburn and my children this year will be attending the Malcolm White and the Kennedy Middle School. I'd like to thank Chairwoman Crowley first for the comments that you made at the beginning. I really appreciate those and feel them deeply. I know the community has been working really hard and this is the most difficult thing that we've had to face as a school community. So I really appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. But regarding the start back to school this year, it's been difficult to hear the recent news that cases are rising in Massachusetts while seeing that the Woburn schools are supporting the hybrid model, which returns students and families to school in September. Our families really struggled with the decision over the last few months because we have really tried to keep ourselves isolated. My father had heart surgery this year and we were taking my parents to Boston, wearing masks but continuing to isolate because we really understood that that's how this virus is going to end. So despite the Woburn schools' choice to go with the hybrid model, my family is going to be choosing to stay home and do the remote model. And we're going to make it work where we realize that it's our personal choice and it's our privilege to be able to do that. But we do worry about the social emotional health of our children. I think as we've heard the hybrid model described and understanding that there is that option, that if families aren't comfortable returning to school, that that is an option families can make, we're not seeing where that lines up with the hybrid model. And it's a concern for us about the social emotional health of our children, about how do we communicate with them. And I think they've been fantastic and they've been really mature about this, which sometimes more mature than I can be about it. But when their friends are in school and their friends are experiencing the hybrid model and seeing each other in person and our children are at home, we're not yet sure, are they going to have a teacher that they're familiar with from their school? Are they going to see peers in their classroom? We don't understand yet what that remote model is going to be if Woburn chooses the hybrid model. So it's a concern that we have. The social emotional concern and health of Woburn students has been a top priority that's been communicated by school committee and by the administration and we appreciate that. We appreciate that my students are more mature than we are and have been able to deal with this without the many tears that their mom has shed over this situation. But we just don't yet understand what this is going to look like and are concerned that we're about six weeks away from the start of school and we don't really know what to communicate with our students, especially that I have one student that's a rising sixth grader and hasn't even seen the school that her teachers are going to be teaching out of. And so that's a major concern. So I know it's been a priority for the committee and the administration so far, but I just want to echo that in what we're choosing here, we just haven't seen how that interacts with, if we go with the hybrid model. And I just ask you to consider communicating what that would be as soon as you're able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your feedback and that public comment. I'm just making a general reminder that school committee actually hasn't voted yet on the return to school plan yet. It's been proposed, but it hasn't. I'm not speaking to Ms. Jones or anyone in particular. It's just good to remind it because it sounds like it was voted on, but it wasn't. And if you raise questions, then I'm happy to follow up. Just make sure I have your email. I will consult with the superintendent and get back to you on your specific questions. Okay, all right. Next, we have Rena Mazor. Please correct me, Mazor.
Mazor.
Mazor. Rena Mazor.
So my name is Rena Mazor and I live here in Woburn. I am the parent of two Shamrock third graders and I'm also a high school teacher in Lexington. I want to thank the school committee members and all of the Woburn educators for their incredible work during this difficult time. I have come to speak tonight to highlight the fact that neither remote learning nor in-person learning will look like what many people are imagining. While many people call going back into school buildings face-to-face learning, I think the term mask-to-mass learning is much more appropriate. Many folks tout the need for socialization and learning in groups, but mass-to-mass learning does not actually provide these things. Kids have to stay six feet apart, can't share supplies, can't play, can't face each other, can't play contact sports, can't sing together, can't hang out at recess. There will be no hugging, no touching. If your children, as mine are, are missing other kids and socializing, mass-to-mass learning will not fix that need. Of course, children want to be in school, as mine do, but they cannot imagine the school that they are returning to. This is an environment where group work and hands-on work will be replaced by sitting in rows and doing desk work. Teachers cannot be patient and understanding when students break protocols around mask-wearing and distance. Teachers will spend their days policing the students and worried about their safety and the children's. We want students to see school as a place of fun learning and inquiry, of positive relationships, but none of those things can exist in mass-to-mass learning. Students will grow to hate school. Schools become a place of trauma, endangering both the mental and physical health of our students. I have tried so hard to envision what my classroom can look like under the guidance that is given to us and it is nothing like what I want to go back to. On the flip side, remote learning will not look like it did this spring either, particularly if we empower our educators now to begin planning for good remote instruction. Last spring, educators had no training, no idea of how to engage students remotely, no familiarity with the wide range of tools we can use to teach in a remote setting. In addition, confusing guidelines from Governor Baker and Desi tied the hands of school systems and teachers and we were not able to offer robust remote learning to our students. Many of these obstacles have now been removed and most of my colleagues and teacher friends in Woburn and Lexington and all across Massachusetts have been engaged in professional development and other collaborations of how we can do a really good job teaching remotely. School committee members and parents, I urge you to consider the realities of how both mass-to-mass learning and remote learning have changed in this brave new world before us. I believe that a remote start is the only safe way to begin our school year, speaking from my experience as both a longtime educator and a parent. I urge you to listen to teachers, the professionals who have been in classrooms every day and who know what schools need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mazor, for that public comment and feedback. Next, we have Eric Schucan. Mr. Schucan?
Hello there.
Hello.
My name is Eric Schucan. I live at 46 Quimby Ave in Woburn. I'm a teacher in Woburn at the high school for 25 years. I've also had two children go through about three-quarters of the Woburn Public School. We moved here more than a decade ago. I have two points I'd like to raise. The first is, rather than to give my opinion of whether we should go back or not, remotely or hybrid, I want to stress that if we do choose to go hybrid, there has to be in advance a mechanism to escape it. What I mean by that is not just the "we'll keep an eye on it" philosophy and make a decision, but there has to be laid out clear guidelines that tell us how we exit the situation back to remote. Because the problem is, if somebody gets sick in my class and tests positive, maybe it's an outlier. Somebody gets sick in the class next to me the next day, probably not an outlier. You can wait for 10 cases and if you do, everyone will know that you should call it and get out. But the problem is it's too late. In other words, if you wait until you see everything, it's already too late. That's what the country has done and that's what a general underestimation of this disease has caused. The problem is that people wait too long. So whatever we decide, I would stress that if we do choose to go hybrid at the beginning or in the middle or whenever, there needs to be a clear and cogent exit strategy delineated for conditions that will signal game over for that experiment. Without that, you are really, really taking a chance of waiting too long because you just want to keep the schools open. And that bias, which I'll get to in my second issue, is a problem. That brings me to my second issue. Last week, there were some comments made, which, some of them were false and perhaps some of them a little offensive that related to the opening of school. We had a school committee member say that during the remote period, no learning happens. This statement is a false statement. I'm not saying a lot of learning happens. It's not five out of 10 or seven out of 10, that's true, but it's not zero out of 10 and I can prove it. I can show papers, well, virtual papers. I can show emails from students and parents, student work, vast amounts of student-submitted stuff and comments that were written on papers on Google Classroom and kids submitting responses that were decent and work that they had to do. So it's not great. It sucks, I grant you, but it's not zero. And the phrase "no learning happened" is absolutely false. And I would just caution school committee members to be very careful about making extreme "no learning happened," "all learning happened." Those kinds of statements are usually not true and the truth is somewhere in the middle. The second comment that was made was 80% of who I spoke to said that their students had no learning. This may be true, but it's not relevant. If people call you to complain, it is obvious that 80% or 100% will complain and that's what you go by. I can tell you that of the five people who contacted me, 100% said it sucks, but it was a decent job and the structure was good for their kids. So my sample is 100% positive and I know that that's not accurate either. Not everybody says it's positive and not everybody says it's negative. So I would caution the school committee to make sure that you collect all the data on this, not just the people who call you individually or speak to you, but hundreds or a thousand pieces of data to get the entire picture. That's important before making statements because in this age, your statements need to be accurate. Even if they're somber, they need to be accurate, not false, to advance a specific agenda. That is my main concern in the process that we're talking, that the discussion is accurate and reflects all data. That would be my suggestions to all of the school committee members, all of the senior staff and all of the teachers and parents. Accuracy, most important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schucan, for that public comment and feedback. Ms. Jenna Howard.
Sorry, little technical difficulties, which is what we experienced this spring.
Don't worry. Okay.
So that being said, kind of following up to what the teacher just was discussing, I'm going to stick up for the school committee member because I do think that learning was poor. And I don't think that she meant it didn't happen at all. But is one out of 10 okay? I don't think so. I mean, it needs to be 80% or above and it wasn't. And it was no fault of the teachers. It had nothing to do with the teachers. It had everything to do with the learning model. It was terrible. We can all agree with that. When we closed in the spring, we had no time to do it. We did what we had to do. The teachers pulled through, the parents did the best they could and the kids were the heroes. But learning didn't happen. I mean, it didn't. So as things declined, the numbers-wise, in June, school was just about over. Had school been in a different state at that point, maybe we would have returned. Did anyone think we would be in this position two, three months later saying that we're not going to put the kids back in the classroom? I certainly did not. I can't believe this is actually happening. We have information from the WHO, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, all pushing for schools to return because they know it's essential to kids' education and their emotional and well-being. So they say that the risk of returning outweighs the risk of the virus itself. That speaks volumes. This whole debate, in my opinion, shouldn't even be happening. Yes, the virus is real, we all know that. Yes, the virus is real. We all know that. We're taking precautions. We're wearing masks. If school is going to be different, we know this, of course. The kids need it. They want to go back. Offer a full-time return, offer a full-time remote. Somewhere down the middle, people are going to have to make that decisions for their families. I know the full return is off the table at this point. I'm not in agreement about it at all. I'm looking into other options for my children, private schools, that is. They are doing a full return. They have the same number of kids in their classrooms. They're going by the same guidance and distance and all that information, masks and everything else. They're making it work. I feel like Woburn should have done a better job of pushing for our children. The funny thing is, is like a lot of the teachers wanted to move towards an online or hybrid model. The teachers are going to be in school a hundred percent of the time. Their risk is not being minimized. We need to discuss the fact that they're going to be the most exposed in this whole situation. The kids are going to be in school forty percent of the time. Forty percent! You sound okay with people? Forty percent is awful! It gives them no structure whatsoever. Once they start to be in a schedule, they're back at home learning on their couch. Unacceptable. I'm sorry. This is not what we want for our, for our future. This is crazy. My son's watching this right now, and he's screaming at the screen, and he said, "They're taking away our friendships." I mean, if that doesn't speak to you, I don't know what does. I mean, we've taken away so much. Do we really want to take away their friendships at this point? We need to get back to giving them some hope. My hope is that we will present them with benchmarks for a return, a full return. If we can't do it today, when can we do it? What's the data going to have to say? How are we going to be looking at this? Are we going to be looking at it on a weekly basis, a bi-weekly basis, a monthly basis? And what does that data have to say? We're watching the numbers. We're looking to the numbers for hope, but we're not getting any hope. Can you please address this moving forward so we understand what it is that we need to look for so that we can get hope back in our kids' lives? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, for that public comment and feedback. Michelle Wiedemwodomski.
Wiedemwodomski. I'm not going to. Okay, it's Wiedemwodomski. Thank you. I am.
Thank you, Ms. Wiedemwodomski.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I am a para in the district. I've been with Woburn Public Schools for two years. I'm going on my third year. I love my job. I love my kids. I want to be back in school. But I ask this of parents, teachers, nurses, and pares. Ask before you decide on which form of learning you will choose. Please make an informed decision. Ask questions. Find out the reality of what classrooms will look like, what the school will look like. Ask what locker and cubbies will look like. Ask about play spaces, what they will look like. Find out the reality of these things. Find out what plans are in place if a child refuses or cannot wear a mask. Ask what PPE and how much PPE will be provided. Ask these questions. Ask if you will wear full PPE, if you'll be required to. If, ask, it's important. Ask how behaviors will be managed. Ask how quiet spaces will be cleaned. This applies both for Janet and Special Education Program, our highest needs population. Ask what protocols are in place for kids who have symptoms. Ask what protocols are in place for positive tests. Ask questions, what about bathroom trips will look like? Ask about the substitute teachers and pares and nurses plan, what they will look like. Who will watch your kids when teachers are quarantined? Who will take care of your kids when nurses are quarantined? Ask what the social aspect will really look like. Another parent mentioned it's mask to mask. There will be no playtime. There will be no playing a game on the rug with your friends, sharing a puzzle on the floor. Ask what the classroom will actually look like. Ask about the cleaning products used in these classrooms. Are they safe for the kids? Ask, are they using them during the school days? Ask about the ventilation systems in the schools. Ask if the schools are up to, are safe to work in, safe to learn in, and safe to be in. Ask these questions and be informed. Thank you.
I don't know who that keeps clapping, but it's okay. Thank you, Ms. Wiedemwodomski, for that public comment and feedback. Corinne Genova.
Hello, thank you. So I'm Corinne Genova, and I have the second graders at Malcolm White, and then my daughter would be starting kindergarten, will be starting kindergarten as well. So I'm, like I said, I'm a mom. I'm a teacher of over twenty years. So my school district just made the decision to start remotely because they just didn't have their, they realized that their plan just wasn't completely in place yet. And, but their goal is to go back hybrid and obviously full in person. And it just made me think about, I did want to, I do want to keep my kids home. I do feel like it's the safest option right now, but it's also really hard because I have to teach and my husband has to teach. So I just want to say, like, from a lot of people, like, have the struggle with a childcare perspective, and we definitely do. But as somebody who went to Woburn Public Schools and as a teacher, I feel like I do want to speak up for the teachers here because I could just sit back and not say anything, but I do want to say, because I went to Woburn Schools, I know that we have a few old buildings, and I know that was talked about the last school committee meeting. But especially, I remember Joyce Middle School. I don't think it's changed at all because I've been in that. My, you know, I've been in there for certain, for different things, and this, I don't think the windows ever really opened very well, and there's a lot of classrooms in the middle of the school. Is the ventilation, is it like properly ventilated? Because I know it's easy, and I know it's, you know, easy to kind of come up. It's not easy to come up with these plans. These plans are very difficult. But when you say, oh, it's going to be this, we're going to have this, we're going to have that, how is it really going to look? Is it going to be safe, like others have been asking? So I do think that just taking the time to really think about what, if the ventilation is there, if, if everything's ready to go back, because we're in the middle of a global pandemic, and you were looking, if you look at a lot of like groups with other teachers, schools all over the country that already started back are like, oh, these kids are quarantined, these classes are quarantined, schools stopping. Do we want to be there, or do we want to get a hold of it, make sure that we can make sure that we can keep the cases down? And one other thing I want to say about remote is that we all tried so hard as teachers in the spring, but it was also really difficult because we were stuck at home with our kids and we did the best we could. But in the fall, to plan for it, I think it can be done. And people are saying the kids need to go back, social, emotional stuff. My kids this week did a virtual summer program, and they sat down in front of the screen with different teachers and different kids. And some of the counselors were so good. They taught the kids to make space. I'm not going to mute you all. Just make space for your voice. When you hear "time to talk," it's time to talk. And this week, my kids have been super happy, upbeat, laughing, really excited to go in to do their like Zoom movie magic, a puppet play. And I do realize my kids are privileged to be able to do these things. But that's what these teachers, I know a lot of Woburn teachers have been teaching for a long time. They have the expertise. They can really make it work. So, so, and I think that it shouldn't be just math and English language arts. We don't want our kids to fall back. Yes, we want them to do well on MCAS so we can look good in our community scores, but we also need to really focus on social, emotional, especially because they've been so traumatized by everything going on. So it can be done. It can be done well, but teachers need to start planning for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Genova, for that public comment and feedback. Toni Barton?
Hi, everyone.
Toni Barton.
Yes, perfect pronunciation. My name is Toni Barton, and I am a teacher at the Kennedy Middle School. I also am a parent. I have two little kids right now and a third on the way. And in my, in my opinion, I believe that starting fully remote is the safest possible option. And as I've thought about this, as I've stayed up late at night, as I've woken up in the middle of the night, as many of us have, the thought keeps coming back to there is definitely a chance that going back to any version of in-person will spread COVID-19. Community members, students, staff, family members of students and staff could become infected with this virus. If people become infected, the possibility is there that they could have long-term health effects, negative health effects for the rest of their life, which we don't even fully know, and also on the table is death. If a member of the Woburn community, a student, a staff member, a family member passes away because we were trying to do some version of in-person learning, what effect would that have on our community? That, that is what I come to, and I try to really feel what would happen if one of my colleagues passed away, what would happen if one of my students passed away? How would I feel? And, and I also think of our children, of my children, of the children that I teach that are my children. I care for them deeply. If one of those kids grows up and says to me, hey, my, my grandmother died, my classmate died, my teacher died, why didn't you guys stop that? You're the adults. We're the kids. Why didn't you prevent that tragedy from happening? How would I respond to them in twenty years? What would I say? So right now, I'm taking the opportunity to say that fully remote, protecting this, and making sure that our community stays safe and healthy so we can figure out the problems that we have in front of us together is the best option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton, for that public comment and feedback. Mr. Ian Hunt? Ian Hunt? Okay, Ian Hunt can come back. Nancy Whipple?
Hello.
No, here he is. Sorry, Ian Hunt.
That's okay.
Apologize. I wasn't trying, yeah, just trying to move, yeah.
I'm one of the minority groups here, but I was all for the fully going back to school in the fall. Both, I'm a parent of two students at Woburn Public Schools, a sixth grader and a second grader. I also have a third kid who's in daycare. You know, the points I would like to make is just the fact that both my wife and I are essential personnel, so we're without childcare. And you know, it's a tough learning experience. My son didn't do too well with remote learning at all. It was difficult to get him to sit down every day and even get to the computer. With both my wife and I both working. Also, my son who's in daycare, he goes every day to daycare, and the teachers wear masks, but no kid in the daycare has a mask on. Zero cases of COVID. Zero deaths in Massachusetts between the ages of zero and nineteen years old. The rates per hundred thousand in those categories for teachers from twenty to fifty-nine is around seventeen per one hundred thousand for deaths in the state of Massachusetts. We're talking about one percent of the one percent. People who go to grocery stores every day, Lowe's, all interacting by following proper protocols and safety measures, wearing masks. And you're not hearing many cases of positive, positive cases. Obviously, I mean, anyone would say remote learning would be the safest way, but it's not a practical way of learning. The safest way to fight a fire would be remotely, but it's not going to happen. You have to be on scene to fight the fire. You have to be on scene to teach these kids, to educate these children. Also, not to mention, they're just not, they need that interaction. That's basically all I want to say.
And, and you also have to follow proper protocol. If you follow the proper protocol, hand washing, wearing masks, having guidelines that you must follow by, then that's your safety net. Like, if everybody's trained properly on that, then they should be able to, everybody is adapting. Lowe's, all grocery stores, restaurants, everybody. Schools need to start adapting. When are you ever going to go back to school? Is it never? Never? All these kids are just going to remotely learn? No. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you, for your feedback and public comments. Okay, Nancy Whipple?
Hi. My name is Nancy. I live on the west side, and I have two girls at the Reeves. One's going to be in third grade and one will be in first grade. First of all, I'm a nurse, so in a facility that who, we've been very lucky that we've had very few cases of COVID, but when this thing, you know, all kind of first started, I, I was scared. I thought, what would I do? Am I going to quit my job? And I'm, my husband's a stay-at-home dad. How would we deal with this? Thankfully, you know, we've, we didn't, but I can tell you, this, even now, we struggle to get PPE. We are struggling to get hand sanitizer. We have some hand sanitizer now that is such crap that my hands are sticky after I use it. So it's, it's not going to be easy to provide all those things for the school. My older daughter, so she was in second grade this year. She isn't on IEP, but there's some minor, minor difficulties. She did not do well with the social, emotional aspect of being not at school. She really missed her friends. She just didn't do well with the, the learning. A lot of it was us. I think we could have done a lot better, I think. But we were just so overwhelmed by everything. And again, I'm out of the house four days a week, so it was on my husband, and it was just really hard. My younger daughter has Down Syndrome. She's in the PALS program at the Reeves. The first time they found the setup for the Zoom, she cried. She was so happy to see her teachers. And that went okay for a couple of weeks, but after that, she wouldn't do the, the remote learning at all. She would run away. She'd hide the iPad. She would be in tears. So I think, you know, I know this has been mentioned before, for kids like my daughter, and maybe for some of the English learners, they need to be in school, or they need to have more of an in-person contact, that one-on-one, because of how they learn. My older daughter, she's, you know, we, we don't know yet. It'll depend. We've talked about, what if it's going to be remote? Will we send her? Maybe, you know, will that help her to go two days a week? Or is it just going to make things harder for her? We don't know yet. And I know she's going to get, you know, she'll be okay, and we'll deal with the social, emotionalness. I don't put that on the score. I mean, it's, it's not your fault. You guys, you know, you did, I don't blame the teachers. I know I've seen some comments on the Woburn pages that, oh, it was ridiculous. It was horrible. There were two second grade teachers. One was at one extreme, and our teacher was at the other extreme of, okay, let's just get through this. You know, she was like, let's, you know, let's just enjoy it. Let's just get through. Let's do what we can do. The other teacher was like, oh, no, we're going to meet twice a day, every day, and we're going to do this, and you're going to have homework, and we're going to meet over vacation, and it was such to the opposite extreme. Now, I don't think that was good either, but I think that the teachers and the staff and everyone did the best they could in the situation that they, I think that they did the best they could in what they were given. And in the short time span, it was like, literally like, okay, we're going to shut down, and that's it. You know, I don't, you know, certainly none of us prepared for this. I know I've heard some people say, oh, the kids are going to get behind, and I, I saw that somewhere else once, of like, but, but behind from who? The whole country's this way. It's not like Massachusetts or Woburn Mass is the only school in the whole entire country that's not going back, and that's only going to have this, and we're going to get behind from all the rest of the country. No, everyone is behind. And again, maybe, maybe that's okay. Maybe we can stop teaching to the tests. May, you know, I came across my kindergarten, my kindergarten report card. It was like, plays nice with others, check. Plays this, check. You know, just basic things, learning how to behave in school, and none of this, you know, really intense things. I, and I've even read through some of the things on my daughter's report card. I'm like, I don't know college people that could probably do those things, you know, college kids that couldn't meet these criterias, so. So anyway, so I think, I don't think it's an easy, there's no right answer. I think going back full is not a good answer, you know, full-time. I, I know some people are like, hey, whatever, let's throw caution to the wind and whatever, and we're just going to go back because kids aren't getting it, kids don't transmit it, whatever. Who cares about that one percent? Well, I have a child that died from cancer, and he was in that one percent. I don't want to have another kid, you know, you don't want your child being that one percent. It's, it doesn't matter until it's your kid in that one percent, or your parent, or your teacher in that one percent. I think every percent matters, and, and yet, I think, but this thing is so many unknowns. There's so many things. Again, how are we going to, they're talking about testing the teachers. I've had five tests so far, five probes to my brain. It's not pleasant. It's not nice. It's not nice. You still get anxious every time, even though you feel good. I'm still like, oh, gosh, what if I am positive this time? What's going to happen? You know, how am I going to work? What am I going to do? Am I going to have to go home? Am I going to have to isolate? I don't know. I just don't think there's any good answers. I think, I trust the school committee to do what they think is best. And we'll, we're going to get through this. You know, when, when this whole thing first started, I was watching Godspell on TV one, early one morning, and it was the, the movie version. And it was when the, it was filmed in New York City and the Twin Towers in that movie were being built. And I thought about that and I thought about 9/11 and how horrible that all was. But we got through. You know, certainly, maybe it didn't affect us personally, you know, directly. But as a country, as a whole, we got through that. And we're going to get through this too. It's, it sucks. There's no good answer. But everyone is going to be okay. You know, I do, I know we're very lucky in my family that, you know, my husband is a stay-at-home dad. I don't envy the families that have to make those choices. I don't. I know I'm very lucky that we don't have to worry about that. And I know I'm very lucky to have a job that, you know, that I didn't lose my job. So I don't know what the right answers are for parents that have those difficulties. I know I had heard them, people talking about maybe utilizing the Y and the Boys Club and even, you know, some of the hotels and things. I think that would be a great idea if that could be arranged for the families that don't have, you know, not as, as fortunate as we are to be able to have those things. But I do think the school committee is just doing the best they can. I think all the teachers did the best that they could. I, I very briefly taught high school many years ago for a year and a half.
Ms. Whipple, I'm sorry. You have a three-minute deadline?
I'll do a good job.
No, I, I just want to thank you for your feedback and your comment. And I, I, I'm sorry if you're lost. And I'm happy to meet you for office hours on Monday if you want to chat. So thank you for your public comment and your feedback. Laurie Desai Ackerman?
Hi, Sachli Gauri, with a G. Can you hear me?
Yes. I'm sorry. Gauri, Gauri Desai Ackerman.
Yes. Really, but it's Gauri. So I, I'm a parent of almost third grader with the Reed School System. I'm also an occupational therapist. I work for a large Boston-based VNA. And I wanted to offer a couple of different perspectives. Some of what I'm going to say has basically been said already, but it bears repeating because I do think it's important. And it is funny how nervous you get when you start speaking on this. So excuse my voice a bit. So the first thing I want to say is that I work in home care. We started out, when this whole thing started, very worried about PPE. We have specific PPE that we use because we are going to be in close contact with different patients. The typical type of masks that people have been wearing out to the grocery store won't really work when you're in a closed room with lots of people in it. If somebody is sick, you're going to be exposed to a much higher viral load and you're going to get sick. That's really what it comes down to. You have more, greater chance of getting sick, I should say. The medical-grade masks, they're going to be in high demand and they're going to be harder to get, especially for medical staff. So that's one thing I want to put out there. The other thing I want to put out there is, I think a gentleman said, you know, very few people get sick. Words to that effect. Well, in my own team, we service the greater metropolitan Boston area. Six of my coworkers got sick with COVID. And thankfully, no one died, but a couple of them, it was a very close call. They were in the hospital, they were on ventilators. This is with medical-grade PPE. So you really do want to think about this. The hybrid model, well, I would want to know, are there different teachers for each cohort? Or is it the same teacher with the same cohort? Are there going to be adequate ventilation systems in the classrooms? Because it doesn't matter if you're washing your hands. It doesn't matter if you're wearing a mask. If the air is circulating, you're going to get sick if there's a viral, a high enough viral load in the air. So it's not quite so simple as just washing your hands and wearing a mask. There's a lot of other factors involved. And I would highly recommend that you don't just look at CDC guidelines because the CDC is flawed at the moment. It is flawed. People, unfortunately, public health has become a political issue and we don't always get the clearest answer. So perhaps looking at what other countries have done and using just plain common sense as needed. The other perspective I wanted to share was that I didn't grow up in this country. I grew up in England. I grew up in 1980s England. And if anybody recalls that time period, teachers were on strike constantly. I had at least a couple of years where every other day we didn't go to school because the teachers were on strike. We weren't lucky enough to have Zoom or remote learning. We didn't even go home with materials. We just went home and we partied. We had fun. That's the difference with the kids here today is that they don't get to see their friends. And we are all seeing the effects of what it's like for our children to be lonely. But there's things to be learned from that. And I think that, you know, thinking about other pandemics, I'm thinking of the time when everybody sort of kept to themselves, when they had, there was a great measles outbreak a few years, few decades ago, I should say. Kids were also isolated at that time. People were fine. They recovered. Kids are smart. They will catch up. Teachers are wonderful. They will help our children. I did not suffer for those teachers being on strike. I went to undergrad school and I went to graduate school and I did quite well despite not having school for a couple of years constantly. The other thing I wanted to touch base on is I also worked in the school system as an OT. And I think it's important for us to start thinking outside of the box. For those special needs children, well, they're very vulnerable. They also have health concerns. They are at high risk, some of them, to get sick. Things that could be thought about are doing home visits. When I worked in the school, I worked for the Quincy Public School Systems, we would sometimes do home visits for some of our children. That would be a little bit safer, a lot safer. It would still get the hands on. Somebody mentioned doing hotel rooms or using the Y or outdoor situations like with a tent, with something where there could be more adequate ventilation. These services could still be provided. Just need to think outside the box. I totally appreciate and understand, and as a parent myself, I really get the need for children to have that social interaction. And I understand people were worried about how the, the learning was offered in the spring. People were just learning how to use the Zoom. I mean, the technology was new to some of the teachers. There was, somebody said they were learning how to fly the plane while you were flying or something like that, building the plane while you're flying. It was like that. I don't think it's going to be like that in the fall now that you've seen what the problems were and how teaching could be done in a good way. So, you know, I think we all need to take a step back and think about the fact that we don't want people to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desai Ackerman. Next, we have Rachel Curberry. Curberry. Rachel?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
So I just wanted to thank everyone for the hard work they've done developing the plans for back to school. And I really wanted to speak in response to the school committee members' comment last week about no learning happening in the spring. Though I do believe that this is a false exaggeration, it does highlight the perception of some in the community and in, in the meeting here. As a teacher and a, like specialist consultant myself, I spent countless hours receiving training on remote learning this summer and also training and supporting my teachers who are going to be working with students this fall. I wanted to underscore the importance of professional development and training to support the fall remote learning. I was happy to see the details in the FAQ about remote learning, but we need to move to fully support this. This is radically different teaching than our teachers have been asked to do in the past. Spring was an emergency and we really should be able to do better this fall. The planning that we're doing around the hybrid model is really based on positivity and hope, not science. We want things to be back to normal, but they're not. We saw the pictures of the PAC Georgia High School this week. We've seen schools test positive, teachers test positive, students test positive as schools across the country go back. I don't want this to be Woburn. Look at the data and work with our professionals. I'm curious to know more about the HVAC and ventilation systems in our schools, particularly our older schools. I'm curious to hear from our own Board of Health. Cases in the state have more than doubled in the past month from 2.7 to 6.3 per 100,000. Our value's consistently been above 1.0 for Massachusetts. I'm very curious what our metric for closing will be. So again, I want to thank you for your planning and your thoughtfulness. I fully support in-person learning for those most at risk, but that's a minority of our student body. I want to encourage you to put resources behind excellent remote learning for all because this is really what's going to happen this year. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for hearing me and thank you for all the work that you've done on this.
Thank you for that feedback and comment. Crystal Keating?
Hi. Thank you. So my name's Crystal Musking and I live in Woburn. I have two children. One will be entering the middle school at the Kennedy and one will be entering the high school. I'm a teacher of almost 20 years in a neighboring district. And I just want to say, I have really appreciated all of the hard work that the teachers and the staff and the administration has put together in helping our students at this time. I actually have a child who is cohort C. So I heard what others had to say about what would happen to those children who do need more support in academics. And it was not easy to be home this spring. However, the teachers that my, I really appreciate all their work that they did. One of the things I am concerned about is that you are the people who must make the choice and propose what you will do to keep our staff and students. The proposals of less than 60 and assurance that ventilation is okay in four of our oldest buildings isn't enough for what's best for our kids and adults. When teachers, staff and students return under your proposal, it's not possible or feasible. Look at the videos that fellow school communities in Massachusetts, like Ashland, have put together with their members of school committee, admin and government volunteers. I urge you, the committee, go through what a student in preschool, kindergarten, lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, high school, special education and ELLs will go through under these proposals. Starting with getting on the bus, how to get on the bus, going to classes, taking classes with their masks on. Some school committee members can't keep them on for a whole meeting. Taking those bathroom breaks, taking that lunch break, taking a test, going to recess, walking down the hall, getting back on the bus and going home. I ask you to spend an entire day doing this and go through what our students will go through. And I want you to film it so that we can all see this in action so that we know what our kids are getting into. Teacher, then after you do that, tell us that you fully support returning in person at this time. Teaching under these conditions will hurt students. Teachers, staff and students will get sick. Someone may die. You've talked about social emotional resources. What social and emotional resources will you bring to our schools when someone dies from a COVID-related illness? Are you and the school committee ready to have that on your conscience when schools open in person? I urge you to begin this school year early to keep our teachers and students safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keating, for your feedback and public comment. I don't have anyone else in the queue, but someone just chatted me. If you want to speak, please chat the chair, who is me, Ellen Crowley. Okay, Alyssa Miltow?
Hi, everybody. As Ellen said, my name is Alyssa Miltow. I have a son who is going to be a sophomore this year. And I am also president of CPAC, which is the Special Education, Woburn Special Education Parents Advisory Council. So I, we are always looking for the students with highest needs. What, you know, what do they need to be successful? And I just wanted to, not even necessarily a comment, but just let people who have students who are getting services know that Dr. Balasari is going to come to the next CPAC meeting and answer questions specifically as, you know, as they pertain to the plan that you're going to move forward with and what services the students are going to get. So I just want to know that, that obviously you can't get a lot of answers right now, but we will be able to hear some. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miltow. Ms. Anthony Montanaro?
Hello, hello, Anthony Montanaro, also Woburn resident. My son Mateo goes to Lynn Scott. My other son, Nico Montanaro, will be starting this year in kindergarten. I just want to say that, you know, during the back half of the year, obviously, when this whole thing kind of took off and school was stopped, Mateo did not do well at all with the remote learning. You know, he was often very distracted. It was only a couple of hours a day that he got, got, got virtual learning done. And the majority of that was then executed by either myself or my wife to get him caught up and then he got his report card. And obviously, he had a lot of non-applicables on it. And, you know, that's equally concerning because that tells me that he was only really exposed to maybe 60, maybe 50% of the, of the content that he was supposed to get in terms of a learning package. And I know that a lot of other schools probably did a little bit better. Maybe they were better prepared for this, given what was going on in the world. Who knows? And it does concern me going back, back to school because we don't know what we don't know, right? But I also know that if we're going to do this two days on, three days off thing, you know, that means that all these kids are going to be going through the school system, not just some of them. And I guarantee you that there's a large portion of teachers that want to go back full-time. And I guarantee you that there's a lot of parents and kids that want to go back full-time. I can tell you that both my kids would go back in a heartbeat. But, you know, it's, it's really, it's my choice. And I'm comfortable with my kids going back. You know, I mean, I'm comfortable with the risk because, you know, I work for a company. We have roughly 200 restaurants across the United States. And, you know, I, I have access to all the information and all the data coming in. And when we opened up dining rooms, we have roughly 7,000 employees. We've only had 10 cases of confirmed COVID since we reopened dining rooms. And we're talking multiple different states. And these guys are exposed to, you know, thousands of people a day coming in and out of restaurants. So I think that if we take precautions, I think that these kids are going to be in pretty good shape. And, and that's just the way it is. And the second thing I was going to say is that if people do want to keep their kids home, why can't we split it up? Why is it a half and half thing? Why can't some kids go back full-time with the teachers who want to teach full-time? And the teachers that want to do virtual 24/7? The kids and parents that want to do virtual learning 24/7? You know, why can't that, that be the way that it goes? I just don't see, you know, the, the difference. And the last thing I'll say is we haven't seen one COVID death in my company, but we've seen a couple overdoses and we've seen a couple suicides. And that scares the hell out of me. And when I say that my kid didn't do well, he was climbing the walls and behavioral issues and everything else. You know, these guys need to, to have some sort of outlet and some sort of normal life. And, you know, some people think that it's too soon. And, you know, again, we don't know what we don't know. I think that if we, if we manage this properly, these kids will be okay to go back to school. And I think that it's the, the right thing to do if, if, you know, people are comfortable with it and provided, again, we, we take the right precautions. So that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montanaro. I also just making a general statement again that you actually, there is actually a parent choice for all remote education. That's been clear by the guidelines, not responding to any particular comment. But just, it's good to put in these reminders that if you choose an all-remote education for the fall, the school will provide that, I mean, the, the district will provide that. Okay, we have Ms. Debbie Drebitt. Ms. Drebitt?
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Debbie. I work at the Goodyear School. I've been a parent for 20 years. I'm not here to discuss what type of model that is going to be done. It, it is what it is as far as I'm concerned. It is what it is as far as I'm concerned. But I'm here to say thank you to the teachers that I worked with and Kenny Casares. We had meetings every week. They made sure that students that didn't show up in their classrooms, that they were found and seen and talked to to make sure they were safe. And it was quite an undertaking for everybody. But I guess my major thing that I want to say is, I want to thank the parents. The parents of our students, I do the special ed classroom. The parents of our classroom were just phenomenal. They were there every time we needed them. They sat with their children because they could. Their children enjoyed their schooling. So, without those parents, we probably wouldn't have had such a good rapport with the students. And I just want to thank those parents. I hope they're out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drebbett, for that public comment and kind words. I am not seeing anyone else. I'm going to give it a minute. I think Ms. Miltow just wanted me to clarify that there isn't a CPAC meeting coming up, but she's going to post one soon. I think that's what... Okay. So, I'm just going to give it a minute if someone wants to chat and make public comments at the school committee. Just chat me directly. I'm Ellen Crowley. Okay.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
All right, a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Come on, Mary.
Wants to speak.
Mary, yes. Mary wants to speak.
Mary.
I apologize.
Mary.
Mary Bonnignori. It's telling me that you are not in this meeting, and I think it was because of the chat earlier from when Dr.
Apologize for that person.
So, thank you. My name is Mary Bonnignori, and I'm a resident of Woburn on Lexington Street. And I did want to comment on last week's school committee meeting. I don't think there's anybody here that disagrees with the fact that in-person learning is what's going to be best for our students, and it's what the teachers want. We want to be in the classroom with our students. But I did want to say that I wholeheartedly believe and agree with Mr. Shucan that learning did take place in the spring. Was it perfect? Nope, it wasn't. But was there learning going on? Absolutely. Here's where I'll tell you, 100% there was learning going on. And maybe it didn't look exactly the same as what it looks like in our classroom. However, there were a lot of students who learned some college and career readiness skills with all of the Google skills that they had to learn, their Google Slides, their Google Documents, their Google Classrooms. At the beginning of this meeting, you said thank you to the administration who's working 16-hour days. I've heard thank yous to teachers. I've heard people say, you know, what a great job we've done and things like that. But we also worked 16-hour days. I can show you my schedule in April. I can show you my schedule in May. And I can show you that I put a lot of time and effort into the spring. And it was very disheartening to me to sit back, listen to those comments last week or the week before, and not have any school committee member, not have any administration member stop those comments and say, wait a minute, this isn't true. The slides that Dr. Crowley showed at the beginning of the meeting, those were from parent surveys that were taken. We were given the results of those surveys. I read through them very thoroughly. And although there were a lot of constructive criticisms, which I agree with because I'm sure there are places where I could have done better, there were many positives that were relayed to us from those surveys. And I hope that you would all agree that learning did take place. And again, a little disheartening that nobody else decided that it was time to say, you're right, learning did take place. It was just, for all the work that we put in, it was very sad. The other thing I wanted to say is that I am on a committee for my building at the Malcolm White. And today, I met with a small group of people, and for every solution that we came up with, whether it was putting your stuff in your cubbies or do we bring our stuff to our chairs, 10 more questions arose on how we're going to keep those children safe. Is sending my child back to school worth that risk? I don't know. Do I want her in the classroom? Absolutely, 100% I want her back with her friends. I want her in the classroom. But do I want her to be that 1% that people keep speaking about? Absolutely not. There are a lot of people who... And you don't want to be one of those people. I don't want my child to be that person. I don't want my child to be the person who loses their mother because of that. Again, I understand people's point of views. I understand, you know, Nico, I don't know what your last name is, but, and Jenna Howard, I understand. You want your children to go to school. I want my daughter to go to school. But I want my daughter to go to school in a safe environment where I know she's going to come home every day. And this is an unprecedented time where we need to figure out, is it safe for them to go to school? And again, every solution we came up with today, 10 more questions. I also have with the hybrid model, we had full-day potential on there today. How are we going to do lunch? I understand that 7,000 people can go through a cafeteria. They're not 7,000 six-year-olds. They're not 7,000 10-year-olds. It's going to be super, super difficult to get them all through that line without them touching each other, without teachers having to separate students or do things like that. It's just, it's almost impossible. And I urge people to watch that Ashland video of the second graders because it was incredible. But how do we do bathrooms? How do we do lunches? How are we going to support all of those things in the building? So, I just think that we really need to take a step back, and I also think that we need to provide a little bit more transparency to the parents about this hybrid model. And understanding that when you're in remote planning or when you're in the remote portion of it, it's not going to be an all-day thing with a teacher. It's not a one-on-one thing. So, I just think that parents need to be a little bit more abreast of the situation of what that hybrid model is going to look like. I also think, frankly, some of the teachers need to be, you know, more informed. We're not also informed about what's going on in all these subcommittees. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnignori, for that public comment and feedback. I do not see anybody else. And I had a motion pending to close public hearing. Second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Ms. Lipsett?
Yes.
Morenen?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, the motion passes 7-0. Our public hearing is now closed. Moving on to our next agenda item, I'm looking at you, Mr. Superintendent. Do you have a recommendation for the school committee on a start date? Would you like to present that to us?
Yes, per my slide earlier, my recommendation for instruction to begin in Woburn is September 16th, 2020.
Any questions from the committee as to that date, that suggested start date for instruction?
Question?
Yes, Dr. Wells?
Yeah, so, maybe the superintendent could give a little background. I assume that's the first day of instruction, so what's happening prior to that?
Certainly. The state has reduced the number of student days from 180 to 170, allowing for 10 teacher days prior to instruction. A lot of the comments that were made surrounded doing a better job with remote learning, so clearly, professional development, technology support, PPE training, et cetera, will be done with our staff and teachers during those 10 days prior.
Through the chair, through the superintendent. I'm not sure where you're at with the negotiations so far. So, is there going to start date for teachers, or is that all still being worked out?
It's being worked out.
The other question I had is my understanding that we couldn't do anything with the backend of the schedule with these 10 days, but there was some discussion about looking at some of the professional days during the calendar year and potentially using the front end to do the professional days that we normally would do during the calendar year. Are you exploring that?
We're exploring all options, but right now, the 10 days is, you know, the number that we're thinking about at the beginning of the year.
Right. But what would have, we have so many professional days put in the calendar already. Would we, is your plan to keep those, or are you still thinking about it?
We're in conversation about those.
Okay, thank you. I'm all done. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Wells. Mr. Kissel?
Real quick question on the, if a student is cohort A and they're Monday, Tuesday, obviously, and then the cohort B is Thursday, Friday, if a student can't make the, you know, two days, something comes up, a sickness, is there any opportunity for that student in special cases to switch to B for, so they're not out for a much longer period of time? Or if they, you know, should be in class, can they be remote that day instead? You know, if they were sick, you know, like a typical sickness, just regularly, you know, a cold, and they were, they're going to miss two days, they're only two days until they go back again on the next Monday, will they have the opportunity to be remote as well? I mean, is it kind of, can that be done, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I had.
Okay, do you have any questions on the start date?
No, 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 I just had that on that, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Any questions on the start date? Andrew, Ms. Lipsett?
And maybe I'm misunderstanding presentation. My understanding was that September 16th was Desi's recommended day, but that there was an option to apply for a waiver if our original start date was a little bit later. Could you just speak to whether or not we explored that and why? Because that's not the full 10 days that would have been allowed.
There is the possibility, I believe, of a waiver. As we've talked candidly, we get guidance from Desi that moves a little bit from call to call. We're just trying to prioritize beginning instruction. Students have not been in school since late June, so the sooner I feel that we can begin instruction in whatever capacity, the better served our students will be.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions on that to the superintendent? Any action?
I moved to a motion that we approve the September 16th start date.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Coramier? Ms.
She's waving.
There I am. I am in favor.
Yes.
Ms. Lipsett?
Yes.
Morenen?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes 7-0. Start date, school committee has voted on a start date of September 16th, 2020. That's all for our agenda.
Madam Chairman?
I want to thank, Dr. Wells?
I had a question regarding negotiations with the teachers. Who's the school committee representative that you assigned?
It's myself, Mr. Kissel, Mr. Malrennen.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes our agenda for the night. I want to thank everybody that participated in this public hearing. It was extremely overwhelmingly helpful. I can only speak for myself. I saw members nodding and taking notes. I saw the superintendent taking notes if he raised a question. If you need further, if you want me to respond to you, if you ask questions, you want me to answer them, then please feel free to give me your email and I will happily follow up with you. I want to announce that the school committee will vote on this on August 11th, 2020, at 7:30 PM. It does look like it will be a remote virtual meeting because we have a member that needs to Zoom in remotely, and we haven't figured out how to do remote slash in person, so we'll just go with the Zoom. That will be the official vote of the school committee, and so, taking into your public comments is immensely important. I am going to have a school committee office hour on Monday, August 10th, at 6:30, for people to just drop in. If they don't feel like emailing, emailing is great, but if they want to just drop in for a chat, I'm always eager to hear people. I will record or write down what you said, and I will pass it along to the school committee as official correspondence to the school committee on your position on reopening. Sometimes, difficult to speak in front of 300 people, so we will honor that as well. I think I haven't missed anything. So, I guess at this point, if the school committee has specific questions that it needs answered from the administration to vote and have a good deliberation on this topic, I would suggest maybe raising those right now. Like to do that? There's anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Malrennen?
I might know so much regarding the next steps. It's more regarding the superintendent's presentation this evening as well concerning our non-English-speaking population and the superintendent's way of getting information out to them. I know he showed us a great bunch of slides tonight. Obviously, the survey is going out in multiple languages. Is there also somewhere that people that have multiple other languages, non-English, that wanted to comment that didn't get a chance to do tonight, could they get that opportunity as well through the superintendent, something to work on along with that survey? If I could just get that message across, please. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any areas that they need the superintendent to look in? Yes.
I think one of the issues that was raised, and I think it's a good one, is it was discussion about, you know, if we go hybrid, what would be the signals that we'd stop and so forth? And I think that should be explored. But I think even on the other end is, if we go remote to start, what would signify when we go back? It's not clear to me what the signal would be for that. So, I think issues around what are the signals we're looking at in the community who were, who's advising us? I assume it's the Board of Health, the Desi, and so forth, because I think whichever way we go, we have to know where we're going forward. So, if the superintendent and his team could look into that so we could have some discussion about that at the meeting, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Ms. Lipsett?
I'm muted, Andrew. Andrew, you're muted.
Sorry, I actually had my hand raised for a previous question and forgot to unraise it. But I would like to make sure we clarify issues of ventilation, especially at the Joyce, the Kennedy, the Alta Best, and the Lynn Scott, and make sure that we are as confident as we can be that ventilation is up to the recommendations of CDC, of state health boards. I would also like to ask the superintendent to potentially comment on, I've seen a number of districts and a number of proposals to talk about a more phased-in approach, to talk a little bit about the potentials for that, instead of choosing one or the other to say we will sort of incrementally get to full in person, sort of as Dr. Wells was saying, looking at what the benchmarks are to move into the next phase. Those would be my first, and I'm sure I will have more as I go, and I'll shoot you a long
Okay. Mrs. Chisholm, did you have a?
Yes, I just think that maybe at the next meeting, we can have Dave Dunkley jump on and go over like he did at the subcommittee meetings and our last meeting, and assure people that the ventilation is in a work in progress as we got our email telling us about the Joyce, how those of being, the train is there, checking on all our ventilation systems, and they are going to be replaced, and that we already have the 90 days that we're supposed to have already in stock, ready to go for school, just so to assure people that this stuff is being talked about, is being worked on, that many people behind the scenes are doing this. But just to assure people, if this is the way we go... the scenes are doing this, but just to assure people, if this is the way we go, that we will be ready, as much as we possibly can. Say, Desi moves these, these guidelines every single day, emails that we get from listserv is just amazing on the different schools and what they're doing, and things that we need to do to be equal or better than everybody else is doing, so I just wanna get that out there, but maybe we could have Dave just, he may, may even be on tonight, but he would just jump on next time, so that he could speak on that, to assure the people about that, because I think that is important.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Anyone else? All right, so I guess if, what I wanted to do next meeting, of course, is, is move it along into the debate portion and not hover in the question portion, but of course, that's, I don't have any control over that, but trying to get all the information out now, so in case you have a question about a specific school, the superintendent could go there and, and look at that school and, and answer back to the school committee. Just a point of information, steering committee is meeting at the Alta Vesta tomorrow morning as a, just a way to demonstrate one of the more older, it's not quotes, it's actually older elementary schools, so we will be looking at the ventilation issues there, just a point of information. Okay.
Madam Chairman, to, to facilitate what your discussion, you know, rather than having questions, but more debate, I think it would be helpful if the school committee could receive the recommendation of the superintendent as soon as possible, so that we're not receiving it that night, or that way we can review it ahead of time to get the questions out of the way.
Yeah, I, I do anticipate it's going to be out by Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, that, that's a good point. So the school committee should have this document in their hands by Monday to review for the Tuesday night meeting. Okay.
Madam Chairman, sorry, one additional question, for people who weren't able to make public comment tonight, or may not be able to make your open office hours, is there any discussion or plan to have to open public comments, at least for a short time before the next meeting as well?
Yeah, if that's the prerogative of the school committee, absolutely. Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
It is, yeah, I mean, I would, I would like to make a motion to at least make available public comment before the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, along the same lines, it might be easier if people send, I know we've gotten some emails and so forth, and that way we can see them, and, because it's sort of hard to, at the same moment they're talking, trying to deliberate, so the sooner they could give you email, or they could send emails to the committee, the sooner we could evaluate them when our, in our deliberations.
Yeah, I, I, public comment should be one night, and then it should be digesting the information and then coming up with, with deliberation, that's my opinion, instead of this on-the-spot thing, provides for much more in-depth communication, contemplation by members, but, okay, so, yes?
Sorry, Madam Chairman, also regarding, regarding Dr. Wells' recent comments there, I know we've received numerous emails from constituents and parents, teachers, I know you received them as well, I believe those are all part of the, can I just make a motion that the ones you receive, don't know if you have those in front of you, but at the next meeting, at least read the authors, and we can make them, make those correspondence part of the permanent record as well at the beginning of next meeting. I know a lot of people took time, sent their concerns, and, you know, we wanna make sure they get acknowledgement of, we received them and took them under advisement, thank you.
Yeah, what I, what I will do is I'll work with Ms. McLeod to go through all of the, the emails that we got, to make sure they're all available and they're all part of the public record prior to the vote at the meeting. It just was, it was too much to do before this meeting. And thank you, I wanna thank everybody that has sent me emails, they're kind and well-thought-out and articulate, and just like everybody that spoke tonight, so it's, it's a very, very good dialogue. Okay, so if there's not anything else that anyone can think of, I know this is a little different for us, but I, I'm ready to accept a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, I had a motion on the table for a public comment.
Okay, yes.
I had a motion on the table to open public comment, I don't think it was accurate.
Yeah, no, I don't think we have to, I'll just
Yeah, just post it, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good job.
I, yeah, there was, I was, I was debating whether or not we would do in-person, but it can happen and have in-person and have people zoom in, it's, and broadcast it too much. Okay, so I will accept a motion to adjourn, though. Motion to adjourn. Great. Second, any discussion on that motion?
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Coramier.
Yes.
Ms. Kissel.
Yes.
Ms. Lipsett.
Yes.
Ms. Malrennan.
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes 7-0, we are adjourned. Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Good night.